Welcome to the Select Board meeting on June 1st. It's 8:00 AM. We have two items on the agenda today. The first is an open meeting law complaint, which was filed against the town after town meeting. And the second is a discussion and vote on a change to the Mass Works grant application, which we initially considered, I believe, on May 15th. I don't know the date.
Twenty-third.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. So let's begin with the open meeting law violation. Anthony, I thought I would. Shall I defer to Town Council? Or would you like to summarize what we need to do?
Yeah, we had an open meeting law violation. It was it was for town meeting. A non-resident wanted to speak. The moderator didn't allow that. Spoke to Town Council, who's obviously present at this meeting. Town meeting and Tom jumped in when you, if I get anything wrong, but town meeting is not subject to open meeting law. So we feel there is no violation there for, but we still have to answer the complaint. So if there's anything else to add, Tom, I'm now, I think the board's just looking to take a motion to authorize Town Council to respond to the complaint. Tom, is that right?
Yeah, I'll do the 30-second update. So Karen Amy Rose has filed a complaint form against both the moderator and the Select Board for something that happened at town meeting. Now, when an open meeting law complaint is filed, it's the board's obligation to meet in public. You could do it in executive session or open session. And Anthony and I thought this was fine, an open session, to discuss the complaint and to either form your own answer or authorize me to answer. In this instance, I see no violation for two reasons. First, the complaint is really against the town moderator, Tim Goddard, for not letting an unregistered voter speak. So first of all, the town moderator can't violate the open meeting law. It's not subject to the open meeting law. Town meeting is a meeting that's not subject to the open meeting law. So no violation occurred there. Second, Ms. Rose alleges no violation from the Select Board. So while you're included, there's nothing in the narrative that would indicate you did anything wrong. And as Anthony said, the Attorney General does not prosecute open meeting law violations that allegedly occurred in open meeting law. They want actually to give boards the freedom to meet and discuss it at a town meeting if that's what they'd like to do. So what I would be looking for is your authority to respond to this complaint, to explain that we do not believe a violation occurred.
Okay, thank you. I just have one comment. I went back and watched the recording of the meeting. One of the allegations is that she was treated in a disrespectful manner. Factually, that statement is, part of that statement is incorrect. She stated the following speaker stated something about her being under 18. It wasn't the following speaker. It was three speakers later. And I'm happy to discuss this with her if she wants to get in touch with me. My reading of that was that Gino said essentially, look at all the seniors in this room. That person who was under 18 and couldn't vote, but all the seniors are here to vote. So I understand that's a matter of opinion, but I just wanted to get that on the record. If there's any other board discussion, I'd like to please open it up to them to speak.
I think Gina was actually referencing Hannah Tosi as well. I don't think he was referencing.
Oh, okay. I wasn't aware.
You know, I would just add, outside of the meeting law violation or not, which it obviously isn't, anything that's going to give Tim more flexibility to allow someone to speak. I, you know, I looked at the, I did look at the complaint in the write-up. And the fact that it was directly related to what we were speaking to would obviously have an impact on that household, which was being spoke to. Maybe there's some flexibility there for the moderator where if somebody that's not a registered voter wants to speak within 48 hours of town meeting, has to request it through the moderator. And why? I don't know. Something just to allow someone that has obviously a vested interest in what's going on due to, I mean, you could tell why. It was obvious that he could have that flexibility maybe. But he didn't know exactly. So you can't really stop town meeting for that to happen. I just think maybe there's a mechanism where we could screen that beforehand and put it on the resident to have a good explanation why before town meeting even happens.
And I looked up the statute. It is completely at his discretion to allow someone to speak or not. So any other comments?
Some of the complaint was somewhat inflammatory. I mean, there was speculation and you know, the town's using excessive eminent domain. I mean, things like that. I think I realize the person was emotional when they wrote it probably, but it's to your point about accuracy, Matthew, I think Tom can certainly address the issue. I don't think we have to get into the accuracy of it all and do point counterpoint, but I'm comfortable with us moving forward and letting Tom respond.
But I will reiterate, apart from the legal issues, if this is a policy issue, I agree with Gary. Maybe we can discuss some procedures to try to keep this from happening in the future. And I'm happy to talk to the complainant in an informal manner about what happened.
I don't think that's necessary. I think all we have to do is check the box and if they want to reach out to any one of us, I think each one of us has been contacted by all the residents down there. So it's not that difficult to find us.
Fair enough. All right. I guess we're ready for a motion in that case unless Mark or Cindy, you have any input?
Uh, no.
Okay, go ahead.
Move the Select Board vote to authorize Town Council to respond to the open meeting law complaint form received on May 26, 2022.
Second.
Motion has been made by Chuck and seconded by Cindy. We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Napoli?
Yes.
Mr. Ronbacher?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoste?
Dr. Coast is yes.
And Matthew Nordhouse is yes. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Our second item is the Mass Works grant application change. There's been, I think, a bit of confusion. I'd like to try to summarize the last meeting we have and where I believe we're at with this. And Anthony or Chuck, please jump in if I say anything inappropriate.
Can I just interrupt for one second, Mr. Chair? I'd like to elevate Nick Lawler to participate in this meeting based on his email to the board previously, offering to attend any subsequent discussion we had about this topic.
Okay.
I don't know if anybody, any other members of the Commissioner on the call, I'd like to elevate them as well.
Okay, that's fine.
Mr. Chair, I'll sign off unless you need me.
Thank you, Mr. Harrington. Have a good morning.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
I'm sorry, go ahead. Didn't mean to interrupt.
Oh, hi, Nick. Hi, Jim.
Good morning.
All right. So here's my, here's my one-minute summary. So my understanding is there are two different funding sources that we're looking at for the sewer and that the sewer has to be fully funded before we can send the project out to bid. So the first funding source is the Forward Bill, which Governor Baker submitted to the legislature. It's basically designed to distribute ARPA funds statewide. And it remarks 11 million for Littleton, 6 million for the sewer, and 5 million for other infrastructure related to the common revitalization, which will go to, as I understand it, 550 King Street. Now, there's no guarantee that the Forward Bill will pass the legislature. So as a backup plan, we voted to apply for a Mass Works grant for the same amount, $11 million. The application deadline of June 3rd. So we had to vote on that before the sewer estimates came in. When the estimates came in, they were higher than we expected. There is a significant cost of goods increase in price. And there was a new requirement in place that all project materials be US-made, which I understand added to the cost. So Chuck, Anthony and I met with the Water Commissioners and the Lepoli Company last Wednesday. And after briefly considering applying for an additional Mass Works grant to cover the difference, we agreed instead that the best path forward was to increase our grant application from 11 to 19. So at this point, what we're voting on today is we're going to request 9 million for the sewer, 10 million for infrastructure related to 550 King Street. And the 11 million earmark in the Forward Bill hasn't changed. So if the bill passes the legislature, I would expect that the Mass Works grant award amount would be reduced by 11 million. But what we're hoping is to be awarded a total of 19 million by the end of the day. And the grant application is due Friday. So the board is meeting today to vote on the increase. First of all, is that an accurate representation of the state we're in? And second of all, I'd love to hear from any board members who have questions.
So Matthew, I'm just gonna jump in as far as there, those are the two funding sources from the state. So there's, I mean, we voted at town meeting to borrowing. And so there's other buckets we're getting money from.
But this morning, we're just discussing the Mass Works grant change. So I thought that was relevant.
Right.
Yeah, good point.
Didn't want any confusion relative to, you mentioned there were two funding sources and we have to be fully funded in order to move forward with the project.
But we also have the authorization from, the borrowing authorization from town meeting for 25 million.
And we've got other authorizations previously as well.
Ms. Napoli, do you want, do you have questions?
I do have questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So on May 23rd, we met as a board. Nick Lawler was present. Jimmy Carr was present. Chuck was not present. And we had a representative from Lepoli Companies there. We talked about what you just recapped, Matthew, with respect to the sewer project. Nick Lawler presented to the board that based on costs and need to now use American-made products and things like that, they felt there was a shortfall in funding for the sewer project between 4 to 5 million dollars. During that meeting, the board had an extensive conversation about going back to town meeting, asking for more money. You know, what were we going to do to make up for that shortfall? At the end of the day, it was decided that, you know, maybe it wasn't a good idea to go back to town meeting. And that there was some discussion about a subsequent grant application that would be submitted to help provide for that shortfall. It was discussed during that meeting when we made our motion that any subsequent motion, subsequent applications for funding from the state through Mass Works would be earmarked specifically for the sewer project. So I'm just trying to figure out how, based on the meeting that took place after the 23rd, we're now presenting a Mass Works grant application that asked for twice as much money for infrastructure, went from 5 million to now 10 million, but only increased the allocation for the sewer project from 6 million to 9 million, which only gives us an additional $3 million, which I would have expected based on our conversation on May 23rd, that that amount would have been more. It would have been, you know, closer to an additional $5 million.
4.5. 4.5 was the delta, the proposed delta.
Okay. I wrote 5 million. So for the sewer project. So I just want to know why, what happened during that conversation that now the infrastructure is being, the amount for infrastructure is being doubled, but there's only an additional 3 million earmarked for sewer?
Nick, would you like to respond?
Sure. Good morning, everybody. I really can't answer Cindy's question. I mean, that came directly from Rick Fryberg and Sal Lepoli, Lepoli Companies. From L E R W D's standpoint, we're thrilled to get 9 million. Chuck was right. We got about, we probably got a gap of maybe another million and a half. We'd always like more, but that's really up to this board to discuss how that grant request goes in. All the funds will come through the Mass Works grants. I think there's some confusion that earmark will flow through Mass Works. So it won't necessarily offset what we get from Mass Works. It'll all come through Mass Works. That $11 million will just go into that bucket. Yeah, I'm not sure why it then went to 10 million. Maybe Anthony or Chuck can answer that better. But like we said, we're happy to get nine. You know, we can have to go with six. So we're closing that gap and you know, and these are just estimates. So hopefully the project comes in lower than our estimates show. And no, if we have to make adjustments to the project, we're prepared to do that. We think we do that in a manner that that allows us to move forward. So I think that's our stance on it, Chairman.
Chuck, I'm sorry.
I'll just add, I mean, Nick nailed it. I mean, that's, Rick came to us after Lepoli Companies had had conversations with Secretary Kenealy. Not even the undersecretary, Ashley, I forget Ashley's last name. Yes, thank you. So Secretary Kenealy gave Lepoli Companies the guidance to up the ante, basically, and said, you know, go for 19. And as to how the determination was made for infrastructure, Rick did allude to how the impacts and the changes that they had proposed to the existing roads in Littleton, as well as the infrastructure at 550 King Street, that would be roads, that would be town roads. So really, I can't defend or present the why for those increases of 5 million and 3 million. To Nick's point, I'm thrilled that we got another three. I'd be even more thrilled if we got another five. I mean, it's, you know, certainly, none of us wants to go back to the residents who voted overwhelmingly to fund the sewer, but none of us wants to go back and say, yeah, well, federal government made some changes. Everything we use has to be made in America. And now our costs, again, we don't have the estimates to Nick's point, but now our costs are higher. So but that is, if we get to that point, that is something that I think that we should support as a Select Board to let the residents decide if they want to extend that borrowing, which we reduced before town meeting, extend that borrowing to be able to absorb that 1.5. There are other options that Nick put out there, as well as options that Rick put out there for adjusting the construction. Maybe some add alts. Rick said there might be some possibilities to put some of the components that would be technically in the sewer project on the 550 King Street property that would be absorbed by that, their $10 million, if you will, to build out, Nick, I think it was the pump station that was proposed at Littleton Lumber, right?
Yeah.
I mean, it's a work in progress. And unless and until we actually have the estimates, a lot of this is speculation, but we should be prepared to make whatever, you know, like playing chess, right? We should be prepared to make whatever next move we have. But I don't think anybody at this meeting right now can answer why the number went from 11 to 19 with the adjustments that were made more significantly on the Lepoli side and less significantly, not that I consider $3 million insignificant to our side.
Is it our grant application or is it Lepoli Company's grant application?
Anthony? Yeah, Chuck. It's ours.
I'll answer. Yes, Cindy, it is. It's the town of Littleton's grant application. If you ask me a question, let me finish it. It's our, it's our grant application. But let's face it, Cindy, before Lepoli Companies bought 550 King Street, we were looking at hoping to get $3 million from the Mass Works grant application process. So 100% to go from three to six and now six to nine is 100% due to the relationship that Lepoli has with the governor and with the legislature.
Okay. Can I talk now?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You call me out all the time for doing it.
My point is, I didn't even hear what you just said.
I said, you call everybody else all the time for talking.
Let's, let's, let's.
That's why I just said, can I talk now?
Excuse me. Let's cover the item. Let's cover the date.
Whatever. Chuck, I'm just asking if you're done speaking. That's fine.
At the end.
So my point is Rick was at our meeting when we had this extensive conversation about the need that we needed as a town for the sewer project. So I don't know what conversations transpired between Lepoli Companies and the governor's office. But knowing what we talked about at our meeting, he was there and heard about it. I'm really surprised that that number for the sewer didn't come back higher because we're still talking about a 1.5 million potential shortfall. Is my concern. As far as doubling, you know, what they received from the state for infrastructure, those are conversations they had with their contacts that we're not privy to. And we can't speak to that. I mean, to me, it still raises some eyebrows, in my opinion. I just want to know why, if we had an extensive over 20-minute conversation about a need for the sewer project, the number came back lower. And the fact that, you know, it doesn't seem that it's a concern to anybody here, but it's a concern to me. And I, you know, not that we're not appreciative of the conversations that or the relationship between Mr. Lepoli and the governor's office and the money that they have brought to this project. But we as a town need to make decisions on what's best for the town of Littleton. If there's a 1.5 million shortfall somewhere, I don't think saying, oh, well, we'll just go back to the residents and we'll get the money there when we have the money in front of us. I mean, has anybody gone back to Lepoli Companies during those conversations and said, hey, you know, there's a $1.5 million shortfall based on our meeting that we just had that Rick was at, can we somehow discuss, adjust these numbers? Was that conversation ever made during the meeting that you had with them?
We did discuss the shortfall in specifics at that meeting. And at that time, the, I can't recall whether the 19 million was brought up at that meeting, but we definitely decided on going with it. It was, okay. I guess I would say, as Chuck said, I don't think that any of us know the why, but I believe we should approach this as a partnership with Lepoli. I think that what we have now is, to your point, you said it's less money. It's not less money, $1 million more. We're closer to the final number than we've ever been. And if we are, you know, if Lepoli Company's relationship is helping the town not only with the sewer project, but 550 King Street, I feel like that's a win for both parties. And I don't, you know, I, again, and also, we are still in the realm of speculation. We don't know what the final cost is. We don't know what we're going to get from the state. And so I am, I'm comfortable with the 19 million and the division as it currently stands.
Okay. I just want to make sure that the town of Littleton's driving the bus on this personally. Not that we're not appreciative to Lepoli Companies and their relationship with the state, but and you talked about a partnership. Well, a partnership would be, hey, this is what the town said that they needed. You know, and that clearly didn't get conveyed to the, to whoever, if there's still a $1 million difference between a conversation we had a few days earlier.
Go ahead, Mark. Okay. Are you done, Cindy? I'm sorry.
No, that's all right.
Okay. I had a couple of questions here. Are our choices on, or the, what we're getting on the grant, either 0, 11, or 19? Or could they come back at, you know, 7, 14, something, some other number?
Anything.
It could be zero. Yeah. So.
Let's face it, the governor's a lame duck.
Yeah. So what happens if they come back at 14? Then do we figure out how we're repartitioning this money? Or can we make this motion like if we know that the sewer needs 9 million, we say that the first 9 million goes to the sewer and then everything above that goes to infrastructure? That keeps Lepoli involved for lobbying for what he wants, right? He doesn't necessarily want the 9 million so much as the other 10 to offset his costs. So can we structure it that way?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Nick.
Yep, thank you. We had that talk here, Mark. I think it's a great idea. And that first 9 million does help Lepoli Companies because you remember they're paying 80% of the sewer project. So I think he wants every dollar he can get for us and for himself.
Right. It helps him less than the other 10. That was my point.
Yeah, absolutely. So I think one suggestion that we would make, and this might not be a good one, so take it for what it is. I think we're getting too specific on something we have still a lot of questions about. You know, is there a way to structure the vote so that it's a minimum of 9 million to the town and a maximum of 10 million to Lepoli? So then if we do need some other additional funds, now the board and the town administrator have some flexibility to reallocate those dollars. Because right now, we're just guessing. We don't, we won't know until the bids are in. But we're getting very specific in this ask. And I don't think we necessarily need to. And, you know, I know Lepoli Companies wants to probably see some commitment from this grant to go towards their project. And we can give that to them in a vote. But just add some flexibility in there, I think, would help as we kind of navigate this process.
So can I ask you a quick question? So is the 19 million, is that, is any of, is that allocated per project? Or are we asking for one lump sum and then we parcel it out as we see fit after we get it?
That's the way it should be. Yeah, I think typically what you would see in communities is the Select Board authorized the town administrator to submit a $19 million Mass Works grant application. It wouldn't get this grant anywhere.
Okay.
Now, I think there's maybe valid reasons why it is. I'm not saying that it shouldn't be. But, you know, I think we're getting specific. For whatever those reasons are, that's fine. But as we get specific, I think we should still keep some flexibility until we have known costs.
So do you think that saying, like, changing the motion to say, you know, identifying not less than 9 million for town sewer and not more than 10 million for site infrastructure work?
I wouldn't put a max on the Lepoli thing. If he can get another 20 million, why limit him? Get the project done quicker. I mean, I think if we can say a minimum of nine to the town, I could get behind that, I think, but.
Yeah, that protects our side, Chuck, so.
That's exactly. But I mean, if he, if he can get the governor to give 24 million dollars towards this project, as long as we get that 10 or that 11, whatever that number is that we want to guarantee us, I'd be, I'd be, I'd get behind that.
Well, to be clear.
I don't think we should put a max on his end.
That number is nine, not 11, Chuck, right?
Oh, the 19. Yes.
Nine of the 19. Okay.
But why should we put a max on the other side? If we put in for a $19 million grant and somehow Sal's able to get the governor to cut a check for more than that for the infrastructure side, a subsequent, whatever, I don't even know. Why put a max on that? Just put that we will get a minimum. That's my opinion. I just think that, why, why put everything in a box? As long as we know that we won't get less than nine.
Gary?
I can speak. So I, I'm looking at, we had, we had a number. We knew we had a shortfall for the sewer. We didn't speak to shortfalls to the Lepoli property at all. We don't, I don't even know what those are. So by getting, I thought when we were going after more money, that it would resolve the potential for what the sewer shortfall was before everything, right? That was, that was what I figured was going to happen with that. We're going after more money. Fantastic. Right off, the delta right away should knock off the potential 5 million that the sewer needs. I don't even like this, I don't even like to talk in those numbers because we're talking about borrowing. We should be trying to drive that borrow down to 20 million. You know what I mean? So it's really hard for me to know. We're going after more money. And I know the Lepoli properties have a lot to do with how we're getting this money and why we're getting it. But I definitely don't think we should be boxing us in. And I absolutely think we should be making more money towards the sewer or going after more money for the sewer to resolve this shortfall before anything else. Because a week ago, we weren't getting more. We knew where we were. So I don't know what changed. I know what changed with the sewer. We got numbers. But I don't know what changed with Lepoli besides going after more money because that's the smart thing to do. And his project is enormous. I was in your meetings, but I, I just think we're talking in this number when we should really be talking about get as much as we can for the sewer to drive it down, drive down the borrow. I, I don't know. We're looking at it, we're looking at it differently than I thought we perhaps should fiscally. So I appreciate Nick bringing forth, you know, a number, at least a rough number, showing that there is going to be a shortfall. But at the end of the day, we should have been going after whatever we could to bring that borrow down anyway. So.
So what do you, do you have a proposal for how we should structure this ask?
Yeah, and I, but without, you know, without being in a room with Lepoli Companies to really know, obviously, it's an enormous project that we, we value and we need, we need it in this town. We need what he's bringing to the town. So I don't, I absolutely don't want to tamper with what he's trying to do. Or, but is there a way we could craft this where at the, at the minimum, if we get a bigger borrow, if it does get approved, that it could, it could at least knock down what we know to be a shortfall, what we think is going to be a shortfall in the sewer, right? Before we end up getting more money for every, for the rest of the infrastructure. That's all. I'd like to hear what everybody thinks about it. I just.
So just, just to make progress on this, do we actually need to vote that we are allocating 10 and nine? Or do we just vote that we're going after 19 and then we can not take it offline, but take it up at a subsequent meeting when Lepoli and everyone's involved to say, since we don't actually know what we're getting now anyway, what the actual appropriation is to the different sides? Do we just need to say right now, let's, Anthony, apply for the $19 million grant? And we've all pretty much made. And we've all pretty much made our voices known that we, we're not really sure why, um, or how it should be um, appropriated between those buckets. Can we just say 19 now and kick it down the road on how we're partitioning that 19? Cause we don't even know how much it is.
Yeah. Can, can we have that discussion, Anthony, later on? Once the money can, we know what the full grant is. We know that state knows what, why we're going after it. That, you know, estimates will be in much clearer then. And then we can, then we can negotiate with LePoli Companies, obviously being sensitive, you know, to, to the needs, but also understanding if we're not talking about, you know, the, the six, seven million dollars that the sewer needs, we're talking about 30 whatever million that the sewer needs. So that's the number that we need to drive down. So, um, that, I guess that, Mark, I, I'm with you on your point. Can there be discussion after the fact? To move this number, even if it's 1.5 million this way, that way, I mean, is, is, or are we locked in at that point?
When you submit a grant application, you need to have a budget, at least a preliminary budget. And there's opportunities to go back and, and change that budget. Um, you know, depending on what you get for funding and, you know, parameters changing and the projects and maybe it needs to be looked at differently. But we need to submit a budget for, with the application.
And if we identify nine million for the sewer and it comes in under 19, then there's a separate discussion later on about where the money that we do have gets allocated. Is that correct?
I would assume so, yes.
In that case, in that case, I, I guess, in that case, I would think that the motion as it's written in the packet is sufficient to identify $9 million for the sewer.
If I may, Mr. Chair. So at our meeting on the 23rd, it was 6 million. We talked about a 4.5 million dollar shortfall. So that would be 10.5. So why are we settling on 9 million?
But I mean, settling is one, is a word. It's also like, like we're getting 3 million more than we thought we were a week ago.
Right. But based on the Mark's suggestion, which I thought was a good suggestion, why don't we just try to say that we need that additional 1.5? So it would be 10.5 for sewer. And then anything above that. To Gary's point, I mean, just to make sure that we, we are covered for what we need for the sewer project. We've, we have identified it. Anthony said we need a budget with the grant application where we have a budget. We have identified a need. So I just don't know why, based on this lengthy conversation that we had on the 23rd, that we're forgetting about that conversation and just going with the nine million, which is great, but there's still a little bit of a potential shortfall there. So why not just go with the 10.5 or however we want to craft a motion, I guess.
I'm.
Actually, Anthony, Anthony was going to say something first.
To answer Cindy's question, because that's what Governor, the, the Secretary Kenealy told us to do through Sal. And if I got that wrong, there's Chuck, Matthew, you were there.
No, you're right.
That's.
That's correct.
What we were told. So that's.
Okay. So.
My question is just simple is can there be discussion later on? Yes, we've earmarked this, but things change. This project is huge. Both projects are huge. They're going to change. And I just didn't know, do we have the flexibility to work those numbers after it is awarded? To where, to how it gets divvied up. And I'm not saying steal all this money from, it's not like we're going to blanket out. But if we're talking shifting this 1.5 million here, I, I, I would love to know we have that flexibility to do that because I don't want to get into a discussion about making the project, trimming the project back. I don't think that's fair to the town. And obviously this board, um, to include, you know, the water commissioners. So they don't feel they want to go back to the town to ask for more money either. So, um, that's all I wanted to talk about was i- is there a discussion that can happen, happen afterwards if this number comes in at 15? If it comes back.
So, right. So I agree that if the number doesn't come back as 19, we definitely have to have the discussion. But I also agree with Cindy that we should be asking for more. And I prefer that this be written as 10 million for the sewer and nine million the other way. Yes, there's still a slight shortfall, but LePoli did do a lot of work to take it from 11 to 19. So it, it seems, and we said most of it would be dedicated to the sewer as he, when we went back for the extra, when he came back for the extra eight, he did get more money for the sewer, but he got a lot more for him than he did for the sewer. So I'd really prefer it was 10 million for the sewer and nine million the other way and leave the half million short.
Nick, do you have a comment on that?
Yeah. Um, there might be parts of the project we can cut that aren't infrastructure. So 10, I mean, 10 million, now we're a half million dollars short. That's construction oversight that I could, you know, I could push on more of my staff. So, um, you know, 10 is great. I, I would just put the minimum in there again, because you don't know until, until we know. Um, you know, we don't need the maximum. I, I agree with Chuck's point there. The minimum, I think, protects us that if we need half a million dollars more now, at least the board um, and Anthony can have that discussions with LePoli and try to figure out how to move it forward. Um, yes, you can rework numbers after the fact, you know, we, we've done that with the other Mass Works grant we got for the discharge site. You can reallocate different parts of the projects. I don't, I don't feel like you're boxing yourselves into a corner right now.
Okay.
Um, so yeah, thank you.
Nick, are, are you saying a minimum of nine or a minimum of 10?
Well, if you're asking me, I'll take a minimum of 19. So yeah, for you guys to decide. Um, you know, that, that number from Kenealy came through LePoli. We weren't, none of us were in those conversations. So we don't know what the conversation was. Um, I agree with, with Mark's point. Um, you know, it was 11 and all of a sudden it came back and we got three, he got five. Now his costs are going up as the guys are too. So I'm sure he's looking at very similar issues.
And it's relative to the cost, right? The cost of our project, the cost of his project.
So, so I think at this point, we've heard from everyone. I'm, I'm going to ask a quick poll of the board. Um, what you would like to do with the motion right now? Um, Gary, would you say minimum of 10?
No, I'm, I'm comfortable with the motion as written, knowing that we can go back after the grant. That way, because like, like, uh, Nick said, we, we don't know the conversations that took place. And without having LePoli here to get a little bit more details on that, I, I don't want to tamper with that. I, I want, and, and this keeps him going after more money and, um, I'm comfortable with the motion as written, but I, now that I know that, like Anthony said, we can go back and get and, and discuss after it's awarded.
Okay. Cindy?
Keep in mind, all those funds, we respond, we have them.
Yeah.
Once we have it, it, money comes to all the town.
Okay. Cindy, what's your?
Just to be clear, so Secretary Kenealy um, designated the funds in a specific way. We're voting on the funds in a specific way. Yet despite our vote, we're going to have flexibility going forward to maybe play with those numbers, just to be clear.
Yep.
Okay.
Mark?
Uh, if we do have that flexibility, it doesn't, I don't understand how we do. But, um, if we have the flexibility, then I'm fine with it. If we don't have the flexibility, I, I think we should consider it differently.
But just to be clear, both Nick and Anthony have said that we go back and change the budget.
So we're really just asking for 19 now with the intent that, you know, a certain portion goes to the sewer and a certain, certain portion goes to LePoli and there's going to be more hog trading later on how that happens.
Because we could end up only being awarded 10 total and we have to figure out how to divvy that up.
Nick, did you have another? I'm sorry. Nick, do you have another comment?
Yeah, I was just going to say that, that flexibility is through the state. Um, it would involve us amending the Mass Works contract. So it's not a guarantee. I don't want to make it sound like it's as simple as we change the numbers. You go through a process, uh, and you end up amending the contract with the state.
Okay.
Uh, that, that's how it works.
Chuck?
I would offer an amendment to the motion as it's written in our packets. And where it says identifying nine million for town sewer, um, I'd say identifying no less than nine million for town sewer and the remainder for site infrastructure.
I believe that that's acceptable to me.
Does that?
I agree.
And Anthony or Nick, with, you guys have more experience with Mass Works grants.
Nick's thumbs up. Jim's thumbs up. Anthony, give me a thumbs up. Come on.
I think that that's based on the 19 million. I think.
It is. It is. But that, that also leaves, it leaves the, the, the door open a little bit for that, that subsequent conversation.
Yeah. Like I think Nick was mentioning earlier too, like, you know, if the number comes back somewhere south of that, then we'd have to have another conversation with them to determine what that breakdown would be.
But it, but it potentially could give us a little bit of teeth saying, well, the board voted, you know, yeah, we only got 14 million, but the board, the board voted that we would take no less than nine. I mean, I don't know how much.
And Cindy's right.
Yeah, it's up to the board.
We should look out for our, the town as well, right? So, um, I mean, I, I would entertain a motion at this point for that, as you have just stated it, Chuck.
I move the select board vote to authorize the town administrator to submit a one-stop Mass Works application for $19 million for Littleton Common King Street development, identifying $9 million. No, I'm sorry. Identifying no less than $9 million for town sewer. Should I add in, in the remainder for site infrastructure? Yes, I'll, I'll add that in. That's my amended motion. Identifying no less than nine million for town sewer and the remainder for site infrastructure.
I will second that as red.
Motion is made by Chuck and seconded by Gary. Is there any other discussion? If not, we'll go to a roll call vote. Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Napoli?
Yes.
Mr. Rombacher?
Yes.
Mr. Decost?
Dr. Decost is yes.
And the chair is in favor, so it's a unanimous five to zero. Thank you very much.
I'll type that up, Anthony, and send it over so that it can be with the minutes. All right?
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn at this time.
Thank you all. Don't move.
Thank you, Nick. Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Jeff.
So moved.
Second.
Made by Chuck, seconded by Mark. All those in favor. Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Napoli?
Yes.
Mr. Decost?
I'm in favor.
Mr. Rombacher?
Yes.
The chair is in favor. We are adjourned. Thank you all very much for.